Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the August 11 Public Works Finance Committee meeting of the Moscow City Council. I'm Walter Steed, President of the City Council. To my right, sitting in is Wayne Kraus, Councilmember. My left, we used to have Dan tip the boat that way. Dan Karskattlin. To his left is City Supervisor Gary Redner. First item on the agenda is the approval of the July 28 minutes.
You and I were the...
You two have to make that... We were it.
And I'm fine with them.
Well, I guess I am also.
All right.
Consider them approved, Gary.
Thank you.
Number two, disbursements report for July of 2014. Don Palmer.
Mr. Palmer's not here yet.
I noticed he was not here. I thought I would go ahead and call his name anyway.
He's at the end of the line now, isn't he?
Yeah, we're gonna have to go to number four.
You can't do number three either.
Number three is also Don Palmer's item, and he still hadn't shown up.
I don't hear his footsteps.
Number four, Mike Roy, are you present?
Yeah.
There he is.
Mike is here. A lot line adjustment request for 1021 North Orchard. Tell us about it.
Good afternoon. There we go. So we have a lot line adjustment request for a couple adjacent parcels. One says frontage on Virginia and the other one on Orchard Avenue. And this is just to familiarize yourself with the site. They're both outlined in red at the center of your screen. You've got Orchard running north-south there, and then Virginia, triangular dead end there to the west. Looking at the zoning in the area, it's in the moderate density residential, which is our R2 zone. You have some swaths of R1 to the east as well as to the south of these properties. Looking a little bit closer at the two properties, one's about 19,830 square feet in size, the westerly one. The easterly one that has frontage on Orchard is 16,672 square feet in size. And basically, the proposal before you tonight is to shift the separating lot line there, as you can see in red, 20 feet to the east, basically to line that up with the eastern property line of the existing house on Virginia, just to run north-south there. And so you can see the remainder, the remnant lot line there, which will be shifted there, 20 feet to the east, essentially resulting in the parcel on Orchard Avenue to be about 14,700 square feet in size. With the additional square footage, the parcel on Virginia is going to be 21,809 square feet in size, plus or minus. So just to review, the R2 zone, minimum lot width 60 feet, minimum lot area 7,000 square feet. Then you have your typical setbacks, 20 feet in the front, 20 feet in the rear, and a combination of 15 with a minimum of five on the side. So as a result of this lot line adjustment, both of those parcels and structures on those parcels will meet all setback and minimum lot size requirements. And so with that, staff recommends approval of a lot line adjustment request, and that's with no conditions.
Thank you, Mike. This is at the request of one of the homeowners. There's two different homeowners involved.
Yeah, it's at the request of the homeowner on Orchard Avenue, Marlene Chrysler. We also have a representative, Bob Wakefield, here representing the Chryslers.
Okay, but the lots are owned by two different parties.
Two different owners, correct.
One party put the request forward, but both parties are in agreement with this proposal?
They both came to my office to submit the required documentation, and so, yes, they're both privy to it.
Yes, sir.
Mike, looks like at one time down the road, Lot 003A, that's the one that would be on the northwest corner of Virginia Avenue and Orchard. Looks like they must have had a lot line adjustment at one time. The picture that we have shows a dotted line and then a permanent line.
It's on the plat, Mike, map.
Mike.
Mike.
There you go. Oh, I got it right here.
Got it. So it looks like at one time, there may have been a lot line adjustment, for whatever reason, done to that one. And so this one simply makes it more consistent.
Correct. Yeah, it usually indicates there's a previous lot line adjustment. And she had mentioned that to me when she came in, that she had previously purchased that 20 feet from that neighbor to the northeast, so...
Yeah, so, yeah. I'm good. It sounds, makes sense to me.
I'll never have a problem with it.
Did I see your hand, Gary?
No, I was, curiosity more than anything. When you do the lot line adjustment, you still have that little hook on the bottom. It seemed to me it would have been nice to clean that up and attach it to the other lot, but it's not my business.
Yeah, I think no matter what parcel it ends up with, it may be a little...
Yeah.
Still gonna have a bit of oddity there, yeah.
Mr. Wakefield, do you have anything to add that will...
Well, you gotta come forward, Bob.
Before we do what we've been asked to do, do you want to add anything to this?
Not really. I'm the attorney for the estate of the late Russell Chrysler, who owned the property, the lower property there. And he passed away at the age of 105 and a half.
Wow.
And his next-door neighbor to the east had been a very nice neighbor for him and had cared for him in the latter stages of his life. And his daughter lived in Canada, his son lived in Arizona, so he had always talked about giving this 20 feet...
Neighbor to the west.
Yes. Did I say east? I meant west, sorry. The streets to the east. He had always talked about giving, when he passed away, giving that 20 feet back to the neighbor on the west, and that's what he wanted to do, and that's why the estate is pursuing this lot line adjustment. And then we've already found a buyer for the property. The buyer is okay with doing that. We're just gonna issue the DAs as soon as the lot line's approved.
Cool.
We'll be on our way.
Okay. Sam?
You bet.
Thank you. Okay, next item is, item five, a state-local agreement for the middle school safety improvements. Alyssa Anderson and Kevin Lilly, tag teaming.
Good afternoon. We also presented this item to the Administrative Committee and received a three-ditto vote to move it forward. But this project was submitted to ITD, Idaho Transportation Department, in the spring of 2013, and we had an award in the fall. Since then, we've been working to come to terms with the contract that would work the way we were originally told that the project would be constructed and designed, those types of things. And so it being a new project, a new program, and ITD having a lot of transition in their Division of Transportation Performance, time kind of got away, and we've worked with them on different versions. Long story short, we had a contract that was very, or a state-local agreement that we're pretty comfortable with now. We're working with their staff. But we got a call on Thursday that we were told that if we didn't have an executed agreement back to them by Thursday, that our grant award of $485,000 could be at risk, or it would be unfunded at that point in time. So Kevin and I have been working with staff, and ITD has issued some more information that we didn't have previously. We actually got the last piece of it today. And so we're comfortable going ahead and moving forward with the project. And so what we're here today is to ask permission to go ahead and allow the mayor to execute the document, so that we can FedEx it in the morning. The corresponding resolution will still be able to go through council on Monday with a ratification of the contract through the normal process.
So there were issues between the city and ITD that held this up, or what?
Yes. Originally, the application, when we prepared it, they told us that it would be the same process that we had used under the Safe Frost School Program, which was, we designed it under city standards, and we also put it out to bid through our own process. That was kind of a streamlined process normally compared to what ITD would do. So we prepared our project based upon those guidelines. Then they sent us a contract that had ITD bidding the project out themselves and procuring the design professional. If we needed to contract it out, they would also manage that process for us. And we kept waiting to get another contract that had amendments to it or changes. There was a lot of staff transition. And so the design guidelines that they originally thought they were gonna have in place never did come to fruition. So right now, at this point, we're gonna be working as a team with the ITD District Two office on the procurement for the design professional, and also with them in moving forward with the construction process. But it is still somewhat simplified. It's not the full federal highway process.
So who's gonna bid it, Kevin?
That's still up in the air. We can neither bid it or have them do it, but the previous contract, the previous agreement when it was issued listed the standards that it would be designed to. The whole process that would be used for the project development was supposedly the Community Choices Manual, which did not exist. It was a new program they were trying to put together very quickly, and they didn't get all the background information in place for the communities until recently. They still don't have that manual, so we weren't comfortable with the existing agreement. We'd sent that back twice. It was contradictory in that whose standards we would use and whose standards, who would bid the project. And so currently, thankfully, Jim Carpenter stepped in as of just today and issued a new memo laying out those guidelines. And we've had discussions with ITD, and we're comfortable we can use this agreement and work those details out with the district.
If ITD were to bid it, they normally put a 25 percent...
That's been changing. The one we recently saw from LTAC had 27 or 8, but that's not under the same program.
I guess these are details. I mean, I think if we want to build a project...
Yeah, let's move forward.
I mean, we want to move forward with it. I just don't particularly want to buy a pig and a polk and find out all of a sudden that we've got to come up with an extra X thousand dollars, or we've got a project that's gonna cost a number that the grant won't cover, or something like that. That's all.
So this project is not going through LTAC. So that 25% that you've seen on Polk and some of the other projects that we've worked on is not the same scenario. We'll be working directly with Ken Helm and his team in District Two to put this together. And so we're hoping to keep, you know, keep it to about $10,000 at the most.
But whatever we do, we will be within the limits of that grant, so our outlay will be that 7.34 percent.
Okay. So the matching money is locked in then, basically?
Yes. And if we get in a bind for funds, we will scale back the scope of the project rather than come back for more money.
Okay.
Yes.
So it wasn't that long ago that this money wasn't available. I remember we kind of shelved this project, didn't we? I mean, just a couple months ago?
No, that was Polk's, right. That was Polk.
Oh, yeah.
Different project.
We get them confused, too. Don't worry, there's several projects going on right now.
Has the traffic circle been in here all along?
Yes.
In the parking lot.
In the parking lot?
Yeah.
Didn't remember that. Okay, what you want to do, guys?
Move forward.
Forward.
We don't have any options. We don't want to lose money.
Move it forward.
We will present it for ratification on the consent agenda for the 18th.
And in the meantime, direct Mr. Palmer to write a check, I guess.
Already done.
Okay, thank you both.
Thank you.
Okay, Smart Transit match request for bus replacement, Gary Redner and...
Jenny Ford.
You are not Gary Redner.
I'm not.
You're much nicer than we expected to have with Gary.
A lot younger.
Hi.
Thank you.
What we got?
What I just passed out was Walter had emailed me or left some questions regarding some information about the Smart fleet. So in the interest of a full disclosure, a member of your committee, Wayne Kraus, is the current president of Smart Transit. I am also a board member. So Jenna Trush is always also a board member. I don't think I'm missing anybody else in here who is. But what you have before you today is a request for $25,000, which was budgeted in the FY 2014 budget by the City Council. Council had approved $110,000 support for Smart Transit in the FY 2014 budget. There was also an additional $25,000 that was placed in that line item for support of public transit purposes, if it became necessary. The idea behind it was that if the amount of support from the FTA coming to Smart through the Idaho Transportation Department, it was uncertain at the time, so the council wanted to put some buffering in there in case additional funding was needed. In this round of grants, one of the submittals that Smart put forward was for equipment, replacement of our buses. If you look at the diagram that you have before you, refer you to the matrix, you'll see all of the rolling stock that Smart has at this point, as you can see, except for just a couple of the vehicles. They've all got well in excess of 100,000 miles on them. It's, having been there longer than Jenny, and Jenny can certainly give her perspective as well, we have thinned the rolling stock at Smart over the last five years. There were several other buses that were also kept in reserve. That was kind of a hedge against one of the older buses going down, or several of the older buses going down. Got rid of a bunch of those. The reason was because carrying them was an insurance cost. So in the interest of efficiency, a lot of those were weeded out. However, because of the issues with having to have some in reserve, these buses break down with some frequency, and as they get well over 100,000 miles on them, the breakdowns become even more frequent, and sometimes quite expensive and extended. So Jenny made an application this year of FTA funding to obtain, I can't remember the number...
5339.
Yeah, 5339 is the replacement program through ITD. And in District Two, we were the only ones that actually requested funding. We didn't, Smart did not request the $307,000. However, that was what was available in District Two. So the community determined to reward us all that money if we can use it. And it's a one, it's one-time money.
And the match is?
20 percent.
And 20, is that pretty much it?
Pretty much. I mean, we'll answer questions, but...
Good, okay. In 2013, you sold two rigs in excess of 180,000 miles apiece. Got hardly anything for them.
Yes.
Probably had to pay somebody to come up...
Not great, but it was close.
Okay. And you're looking for this new rig to acquire it with the city's $25,000 match to replace one of those?
Correct. A paratransit bus.
And then you have a plan to try to replace the other one?
Correct. We want to get a fixed route bus as well in 2015.
You're not looking to replace these, or you're looking to replace those, one of those, correct?
We're looking to actually continue having a rolling stock that is full. We're looking to, when we had requested the funds from ITD, we had listed the 599 and 801 as vehicles that would be up for replacement, because we had already surplus them. So those were included in the application.
So those are the two you're replacing?
Correct.
Where I'm going is that's gonna give you, for fixed route, now, one of those will be fixed route and one will not. Is that correct?
Correct. And as you can...
So that'll give you one, two, three, four, five, six and a half fixed route buses?
However, if you see 409 and 420, even 427, they're up to over 200,000 miles. I mean, that's definitely a vehicle that we're gonna have to consider surplusing soon.
I understand...
Okay.
We gotta run a bus today.
Mm-hmm.
And if the one we're planning to run won't run, we gotta have a bus that will run.
Exactly.
I get it. I'm just a little questioning, how many buses do we need in the driveway in order to keep the service going? And you even mentioned insurance cost. I mean, I've done the same thing. I've been out to the city shop and seen what appears to be a lot of police cars sitting around out there. I later learned they were cannibalizing them because they could for parts and stuff, and I don't know if Don was insuring them or not. But at any rate, that's the thrust of my question.
So we're, two buses are running all the time, and just two for the, for these fixed routes?
Just for our fixed route service, that's correct. And then we also have a separate paratransit vehicle that's en route.
And that's dial-a-ride?
Correct, dial-a-ride.
And that, only one of those running at a time?
Sometimes two.
Sometimes two. There is sometimes a small overlap. This vehicle that we're looking at is a much more efficient vehicle, and it would likely reduce our, the necessity to have two vehicles, excuse me, two vehicles en route during our really busy times.
I mean, I don't, I don't have a problem doing it, and I don't want to try and micromanage the transit system, but...
No, as long as you keep just providing money, you won't have to. And I'm not trying to not provide money.
Sure.
I mean, I understand the opportunity to get a new bus.
Right.
I get it. But I probably wouldn't be even hesitating if, to run the two fixed routes in Moscow while we're constantly sitting around wanting a third route, and yet to know that there are, will be, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, a dozen buses virtually out there with one or two of them running dial-a-ride.
A dozen.
There's...
One, these two are replaced.
Those gone.
One, two, they're being replaced.
No.
Those are sold.
Those have already been sold.
You said the one where they put the 25 up will replace one of them.
Lot these down here.
Yeah, one of the reasons that they were listed as replacements, when the new buses, if we obtain the funding to obtain those buses, I presume we'll look at current stock and then rotate the worst one out.
So one of these will be gone when a new one shows up?
Yeah, there's no intent to expand the fleet by two buses.
We're not worried about it.
Okay, that's my, that was my question earlier. I must not have made the question clear.
I think I confused it. But we don't intend to expand the fleet, correct?
Correct.
So with the new buses, one of the, with the two new buses, because you've got a dial-a-ride bus possibility also, then two of the upper section, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine buses will be phased out.
Well, and Walter, under 910, that's an actual minivan. It's not an actual bus. It's used mainly as an admin, severe reserve.
Two of the upper eight buses.
Okay.
I think?
Sure.
We have eight buses that we roll in and out of stock. We could have, at any given time, a need for four buses on the road at one time. Generally speaking, we have one to two buses having maintenance done or repairs done at any given time. That could leave us, if we had two in the shop, four on the road with only two spares, and then if one of those went down. So we have, we have plenty of rolling stock, but do I think we have too much?
But you're not flush.
I don't think so, you know, because we have to remember that we want to be able to deliver a service. And if you take a look at, for instance, what, 404, that's the Walmart bus?
Correct.
You'll see 404 gets, it gets double duty sometimes. You'll see it on a fixed route, depending on what's going on. It could be on a, it could be on the...
Dial-a-ride.
Dial-a-ride, too, yeah. It could be on that one. Now, this, one thing that is going to be beneficial is that the bus that Jenny wants to buy is one that is, I'll call it a lowrider. What's the actual term for it?
It's a low floor, an arbach low floor.
It's going to reduce the amount of time for loading wheelchairs to half the amount of time it takes now, which is going to speed that dial-a-ride system up to where we may not need to use two buses at a given time. So the efficiency will be substantially increased with that particular bus. And then as she finds the match money for the second bus, that'll replace one of the high-mileage, larger fixed route buses.
He's gonna bring one.
And then we can give the high-mileage buses away to our favorite charity, because we sure can't get any money out of them.
Oh, hi. I'm wearing my grant hat.
You want a bus?
No. No, but I do sit on the District Coordinating Council for Transportation for District Two, and I'm your grants manager. The 5339 money that was available for this round of funding is some that had been accumulated by ITD over the four-year period, and it's not something we're going to see again. We know under MAP 21, that type of funding doesn't come about anymore. And the transportation bill that was recently put into place to extend funding is about half of what it was for this type of funding for, you know, the smaller rural carriers to have capital purchases money. And it's become highly competitive in the state to have any money available for capital purchases. And so my feeling is that you won't see this opportunity come forward again, and if you don't take advantage of it now, that money will go to another district.
I'm not questioning the opportunity. I'm not having a problem with the opportunity to get a new bus. I'm questioning the size of the fleet, and you need to have that much rolling stock, and the fact that we increased the Smart Transit line item by how much, exclusive of this, this year, for 2015?
I believe 100. What's that?
120, 110 to 120.
Okay, added 10 there, then 25 here. And I'm a fan, I always have been. I got taught on Transportation Commission about public transit, but just trying to...
Understand.
Keep an eye on it, and if I drive across town and see a bus go by me, and then I see a dial-a-ride, and then I go by the transit center and there's 27 buses parked out there...
You need new glasses. Not 27 buses.
Then I want to know why there's so many buses.
Councilman Steed, I would like to share one experience I had from a few years, it's been several years now, but I used to manage the transit system for Valley Vista in St. Mary's. And we had an experience, and when I saw that this was the type of bus that Jenny wanted to purchase, I was very excited. People getting on those lifts in different angles and different things. We actually had someone who got on with a walker who fell off backwards off of the lift, and they died. And that has never left my head in managing a train.
Where was that at?
It was in St. Mary's, on the Valley Vista system. And with this type of bus, it would be very difficult for something like that to happen, and to see that you have, you know, a ground-level lift that, I can't even tell you, you know, not only does it save them money for the workman's comp and all kinds of different things, I just know that when we go through our transportation provider meetings online, and we go through all different kinds of review, looking at different types of funding and vehicles that are out there through the District Coordinating Council, this vehicle has probably one of the best ratings. Saves, I've heard Kelly Fairless talk about it. It saves on workman's comp claims, it saves on wages, it saves on all kinds of different operating expenses. So I just feel like this is a really good investment, and I just wanted to share that.
Thank you, ma'am.
And safety. Thank you.
That's it?
Yep, absolutely. Let's move forward with it.
Okay.
And like Walter said, just worried about the rolling stock. I'd love to see us have that third route, and it looks like we almost have enough buses to do it.
Yeah, actually.
If I may, I would note that in the backup, you see that the funding probably will not be accessed until after October 1st. It has, we're carrying it over, and it was included in the budget changes. And part of that is because the procurement can't really be completed by then.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Come see us again soon.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jenny.
Tom Grandin, to talk about the East City Rotary and Ottness Park Playground Installation that awarded contract. This does not include the acquisition of the equipment. You might want to start with that and explain it to us.
All righty, thank you, Chairman Steed. Currently, or, I'm sorry, in previous approvals by the City Council to this past late winter-spring, and one last year authorized the department to purchase three different sets of playground equipment and safety surfacing for Ottness, Rotary, and East City Parks.
equipment and safety surfacing for Otteness, Rotary, and East City Parks. The idea being that we'd get those purchases done and in hand, and then go to bid for the installation of the three separate playgrounds at one time versus separately as a means of gaining some economies there, and that's the procedure that we have followed to date. We currently have both sets, two sets of playground equipment in stock at the yard, and the third one will be delivered next week, I believe. So, that, prefacing the installation was, modus operandi. So, in late July, the city went out to bid for the three installations of the new playground equipment and safety surfacing at the three mentioned parks. We received one responsive bid from Picture Perfect Playgrounds out of Ashton, Idaho, totaling $29,958.19, and is within our budgeted amounts for fiscal year. Installation work, assuming approval, would commence on or around August 25th and then be done substantially by mid-October. Park staff, as a portion of the projects in keeping our costs down, will do the removal at East City Park and Rotary Park of just the two, the one smaller playground at each park. So, these are for the younger set. Both East City and Rotary have two different sets of equipment, one for five-to-12-year-olds and one for two-to-four, for example.
This is the smallest, the small guys.
Yep. So, we're replacing equipment that's a bit aged, out of date, and so forth. Nice upgrade for the city.
And the Otteness will also be a small kid?
That's correct.
Okay.
I've just, because I was just thinking that it wasn't too long ago we replaced the large equipment at East City Park, was it not?
No, I believe it was about 12, 13 years ago.
Really?
Yep.
Time flies.
That was the first or second in Rogers' replacement program, but that's still in pretty good shape, though, even though heavy use. So, the request today is to recommend acceptance of the bid submitted by Picture Perfect and get the contract consummated and the process rolling.
Tom, does having one bidder bother you? Having only one bidder bother you?
Well, in other instances, perhaps, but this is just a terrific price, much lower than we anticipated. We're switching over our safety surfacing to rubber product as opposed to the chip, wood chip, ADA compliant. And this requires more concrete work and an installation of the rubber padding, but they came in with a very good price and ready to stand by it. So, we really only have three contractors in the general area that were interested. And one's out of Spokane and was already booked solid through this fall, and another one was not responsive.
Couldn't work it in?
Right.
Dan?
Yeah, I experienced the same thing with only getting one bidder, but still you end up with a pretty decent price. And since we have the, we got the equipment, we need to get it put up, so I say we move forward with it.
Put our own consent.
Do it, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Les McDonald, with a proposal for some Jackson Street frontage improvements in front of the new EMSI building formerly known as the...
Daily News.
Terry looked at it and he says, "What's that?"
It's an Idaehonia.
What's an Idaehonia?
Back when I was delivering it, it was the Idaehonia.
There has been a project in the works with the owner of the, what was the Daily News building, Mark Wentz, for about a year, and it has been before the city council previously, involving improvements to the building, improvements along the frontage of the building, and the installation of fiber to the structure. The city pursued a Jim Grant last year to support the frontage improvements on Jackson Street and the fiber installation. City was successful in obtaining that, and the projects have been moving forward. The building itself has been remodeled quite extensively, as I understand it. The fiber system has been installed, and what remains is the frontage improvements on Jackson Street. So, that's what we're here to talk about today. In the process of going through all of that construction effort over the last nine months or so, there have been some financial challenges that have arisen. And so, we were approached at the city about how we could perhaps package this project in a way that it could still occur, using the remaining grant funds, some funds from Mr. Wentz from EMSI, and some participation by the city. And so, that's what we're here to talk about today, is really what we have worked out along that line to date, and are essentially ready to launch if everybody's okay with what's being proposed. I'll walk you through a little bit of this. First off, the site is on Jackson Street, north-south here, with Third Street shown at the top, Sixth Street at the bottom, just to help orient folks. This is the building that was the Daily News, is now the new home of EMSI. To the north of that, there is the thrift store and the Salvation Army in there. The existing street conditions are somewhat like this. The building itself has changed since this street photo was taken by Google a couple years ago. And the area that is being considered for the frontage improvements really starts essentially in the vicinity of this crosswalk. This is the beginning of the EMSI building, and then extends down to the south end of that building. So, it'd be this area down through here where these couple of vehicles are parked, and really from North Crosswalk to and a little bit beyond the South Crosswalk, which is right there. This map is a little bit difficult to see. This is actually off of the construction drawings, but it essentially shows the improvement as being Jackson Street on this top of the screen, north is to the left. Existing curb line runs down through about here, and what will be happening is a widening of the sidewalk with the inclusion of new trees, the vintage-style lights that we used on College Street, a little bit of drainage, things of that nature, zooming in just a little bit. We're going, in essence, to a 14 and a half foot wide sidewalk, so it really opens up what's a pretty narrow and somewhat poorer-conditioned sidewalk today. Gives room for some of those street frontage features like the trees and the vintage-style lights. Potentially, you could see, you know, some bike racks and/or benches, things of that nature, within this furniture zone between the trees at some point in the future, while retaining a fairly wide, I believe it's about six feet, yeah, about six feet or a little greater, actually, of walk through here, replacement sidewalk in much better condition than what's out there today. Just a couple of quick shots. There's the cross-section of the sidewalks, a 14 and a half feet out to the back of the curb line, and then a section with the trees. They will have tree wells like we have on College Street with the metal grates around them, five-foot square tree wells placed, I think it's about three feet off of the curb line itself, so we get adequate clearance from the highway. So, that's the project, and as I mentioned earlier, it was funded through the Jim Grant program. There was a $50,000 grant. Of that, about $17,000 has gone towards the fiber project, so the remaining, roughly $32,000, would be available for this frontage improvement. The funding package that we have worked out with Mr. Wentz and with the representative from EMSI is reflected here in this summary, and the pricing is based upon the quotes that were given to Mr. Wentz from his contractor for the street-related work. There were a few pieces that were not within that, such as installation of the tree grates themselves, the testing of the concrete and soil by a geotech firm, and the actual lights themselves. So, we're working on those three items with some numbers from our records here at the Engineering Department with respect to what we've seen on past prices for that type of installation. So, with all of that in a package with a 15% contingency, we were seeing numbers actually just a little bit below this total of $100,000. I rounded up a little bit here. And the proposed distribution for funding this would be roughly the $32,000 remaining in the Jim Grant, about $5,000 or a little less out of the sidewalk program, approximately $14,000 or a little less out of the streetlight program, $4,100 on the arts program to deal with the tree grates on the five trees, and then $15,000 or up to $15,000 from Mr. Wentz, and up to $30,000 from EMSI. So, in total, just a touch over $100,000. That includes the 15% contingency that we've put on the pricing that we've received. Of those items, the EMSI contribution would be subject, if approved, to a URA Public Infrastructure Reimbursement Agreement, and that is something that is being drafted right now. It is anticipated that it will go to the URA Board on Wednesday this week for consideration. That agreement is likely to include the typical approach, which is reimbursement at a level that's equivalent to about half the tax increment increase on an annual basis, up to 10 years, and up to the amount that would be specified or that was expended with the project, as shown here, $30,000, possibly less than that if the prices come in lower.
Tax increment on this building alone?
On this building alone. Gary can correct me on that if I misstated that. I think that's correct.
What did you say? How much was that you said?
It would be one-half of the annual tax increment increase that is due to this building's improvement or increased value, if you will. So, if, for instance, the remodel of this building resulted in, I'll just pick a number, a $2,000 or I'll say a $3,000 tax increase, then only $1,500 of that would be reimbursable to EMSI, or the owner, in this case, Mark Wentz, under the agreement, through a period of up to 10 years. I think a 10-year term is what they're looking at. If the total amount is reached before the 10-year term, then it would terminate with the point at which the full reimbursement occurs. If the total amount is not reached in the 10-year term, it just ends at 10 years, and they end up with less reimbursement than was anticipated or expended for the project. So, that one is subject to approval by the board, and like I say, is in draft, is being drafted now.
The reimbursement is only to the EMSI money?
No, Wentz is included as well. That's the private contribution, so it would be up to $45,000.
Is it up to $45,000, okay. The reimbursements under the URA can only be for public infrastructure typically, and these would be eligible costs under that scenario. So, that's what's proposed. What we're looking for here is just continued concurrence with the approach. The city expenditures are within programs that are already in our budgets. We have sufficient budget in those programs under the 14 and 15 fiscal years to cover these costs, and the type of work that's being proposed for the city contributions are consistent with those programs. The sidewalk program, portion of that would be the 30% participation by the city for downtown street sidewalk improvements that we've been doing throughout the downtown area over the last several years. Streetlight program is replacing the Cobra headlights that are out there today, putting in LEDs with the more, you know, higher efficiency, but using our vintage-style lights that, as I said, we used on College Street. And the arts program being the art-approved tree grates that we've used, similar to what we've done on College, but I think it's actually a different design in this case. City staff would also participate through the Streets Department with some of the demo on the sidewalk and curb, which is what we've done on other downtown street projects or sidewalk projects to help keep those costs down. There's a value to that of roughly $2,500.
Gary?
I would note that the remodeling of the News Review Building for EMSI was not one that required public improvements on this street, so it's merely an opportunity for us to partner in a public-private partnership with the, hopefully, the reimbursement assistance of the URA, to get that Jackson Street streetscape to the point where it becomes more inviting, more pedestrian-friendly. As you'll recall, this is also an area where years ago, we had applied for a community development block grant for downtown, and one of the areas that we targeted was the sidewalk in front of the News Review Building. Those, the sidewalk is less indicated, is not in fine shape. It's barely ADA-passable, if at all. Wheelchairs have great difficulty coming up there. So, by extending that sidewalk, it gives access. We have the new development at the corner of Jackson and Washington that hopefully the restaurant that's going in there. We anticipate that that block will develop over the next couple of years, and hopefully we'll be able to take this same elevation and go the entire length of the block, if that's possible. And ITD seems to be, at this point, amenable to that sort of improvement.
But you're not proposing this at Jimmy John's?
No, sir, not at this point. Again, that's a, that is, that development does not require any improvement to the Jackson side of the street.
Dan?
So, when this is all, well, number one, we're strapping parking on that side through that section. That's...
How many spaces?
I believe there are about five.
Five?
Five or so, yeah, I think it's about five in that frontage. But it's an area that's frankly not heavily used for parking. We don't see cars there too often, but occasionally you see a few.
And it's three-hour now, anyway, isn't it? Is it in the three-hour parking area?
I think that may be...
It is.
I'll have to think about that. I think it runs down the middle of that street.
I think it is.
I would presume it was three without looking.
I'm going to have to check.
But I don't know that.
I think so.
Also, who's responsible for the sidewalk when all this is done?
For what part of it?
Future, future maintenance of the sidewalk.
Well, it would be the case, as all sidewalks have in the city, which is that adjacent property owner.
This is the only stretch of sidewalk that has this narrow issue. Is that correct? Or is it all the way down to Sixth Street?
Well, the, anywhere that the buildings are fairly close, well, for instance, the thrift shop to the north, I think, has the same situation, so that entire block of buildings...
From the church.
Back up here a minute. So, I think all of, all of the frontage here has the issue. It's a little more open here, but it's, you know, it's an asphalt parking lot to the rear. So, if it is restricted, there's a little more room, although there are some little curves and changes in elevations that create issues.
So, do you anticipate in the future having to remove parking all the way, that whole area, all the way from Third Street down to the church?
Yeah, this is actually something we've contemplated in the past, is doing that very thing, with the idea of doing what has been proposed here, which is widening that street sidewalk frontage so we get more of that, you know, urban downtown feel rather than you're on a highway feel that's there today, to make it wide enough so it's a more comfortable place for the pedestrians and the folks that are on that sidewalk system in front of those businesses. You know, as this area continues to redevelop, and we're anticipating, you know, the parking lots all the way along here will probably all redevelop in some fashion as Jimmy John's is going in now, then the use of that sidewalk will increase. And so, having that wider walk, just, you know, a higher comfort level. We have talked about doing this treatment all the way through here, and actually, ITD encouraged that when we took this to them. They felt it would actually be better if it covered everything from Third to Sixth Street, so that it was consistent all the way through.
But after we start heading south from EMSI Building, it opens up because the buildings are not built right up to the property line.
Except for the Cowan Building.
Excuse me?
Ted Cowan's Building is right on the property line.
That's true, it is.
This one here, I believe, is that Cowan's?
Yeah, I would note that it's also broken up. You're not losing that much parking because you have driveways, curb cuts, up and down that you don't have parking in between. Then you have the free right turn lane, whether it's designated that way or not...
It's there, at Sixth.
...south going into the university. So, there's actually not as dense of parking as you would think.
I think this is the most parking, really.
It is.
I think this is the biggest section of parking, really.
Along the curb line.
Along that section. Another thing, I guess, would it behoove us to extend this north a little ways in front of the thrift store? I mean, what kind of, I mean, I'm looking at economy of scale here and trying to get it all done at once type of thing.
Gary's got a big grin on his face.
Yeah, we discussed this pretty extensively about, you know, with the Jimmy John's coming in, and eventually we think that the old Chevron Station will also improve. We talked about that, and Lester and his staff ran numbers on it.
In whose lifetime?
Yeah, it's, well, I don't know. The section that's in front of the News Review Building actually... The section that's in front of the News Review Building actually is, what, roughly if, less than a fifth of the, of the length of that block, so it would be a lot of money.
Well, what about just to the, just that much more up past the Old Creighton's Building or the Salvation Army?
If the council, if the committee's direction is for us to price that out and identify some opportunities for funding, we could certainly do that. I will tell you that from the URA's perspective, and that's what I've been working on, is I served as interim director, we did get some pretty good pricing out of McCall's. Whether they would extend that, that length, I don't know. The pricing I thought was pretty competitive, didn't you, Les?
I did, I did, yes.
So we could certainly review that and bring that to you if you like.
You're already going just a little bit into the Salvation Army building.
There you go, yeah.
If you go back-
Just a little.
If you go back into your construction drawing, I think you can see the, see the building line. I believe that shaded line in the bottom left is the property line.
Right there.
Yeah.
Right, and it's being extended that much further north to deal with the crosswalk.
The crosswalk, yeah.
Because we have to get past that.
So, yeah, I mean, you're not coming that much more to get the whole building in area, but-
There's probably another-
Forty feet?
Forty feet or so, somewhere in that range. We could certainly look at that and see if that's something that, you know, we could identify funding for and if McCall's would be willing to extend.
I think it'd be worth looking at.
I think so.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it becomes a question of, you know, just, there's that much more city cost and where does it come from?
Well, the, I know they want to move ahead as quickly as possible. We've not made that. We could certainly make the overture. Part of the issue you've got here is that Wentz is responsible for the construction of this section we're talking about. If it extends north to-
The driveway.
The thrift shop, I don't know if that could, would we have to take that on or could Wentz just extend that?
We could, probably could do it as far as who manages it-
Manages the contract.
-the construction itself. I think we could probably work it such that we could continue with the same contractor in, in some fashion. I think there's a way we could manage that.
What we could do is if the council wanted to move this ahead, if you like the concept, we could go ahead and put it on the agenda. We could identify any issues. As we take it through the URA, there have been some delays on this, so the URA has only seen it in concept up till now. I anticipate that they will approve it or consider it and then determine whether they want to approve it on Wednesday.
What did they figure for the date of construction? This summer?
Yes.
They would still like to do it this summer.
Get it done this year.
We better move on it then.
Well, the other aspect to think about is if we do extend north, we have to get it designed because there will be some changes and get it back through ITD because it's a change on the approved construction set.
But they, they're being in favor of it.
I, yes, and I suspect that they would, you know, do what they could to keep it moving along, but there is some time involved.
I think, I think when we priced that out, I think you did some preliminary work.
We did some preliminary pricing, actually for the entire stretch from Third to Sixth, based on the early numbers that we had, and I don't think they included McCall's, actually better numbers.
But Les, all, all you've got to do to tell you your job is figure the linear feet of this, divide it and get a per foot, and just figure how many more feet you need.
The pricing part, yeah, that's easy. I mean, that won't, that'll take a few minutes, but actually-
Because it's still the same-
We move forward, right?
-curb gutter, trees, tree wells, lights, et cetera.
Right, we just apply the additional quantities and we can get there, but-
Walter, I'd suggest we go ahead and move forward with this as presented and direct staff also to pursue the additional costs and timing for extending it to the driveway for goodwill.
And do you have any ideas-
Not goodwill, but-
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army. Do you have any idea where to get the money to pay for it?
Well, that's what they-
They're both smart.
We'll have to take a look.
For them to find.
That's right.
I may perhaps the way to do it is to place this on the consent agenda. If we can identify some things in time for consideration, one of you could pull it off and we could present that at that time. That way we're not holding the thing up.
Okay.
Well, we want to move forward with this, for sure.
Understand.
And if they want to build it this summer, we need to move forward, so we need to get going.
I think, I think your ITD approval is gonna be your problem, even if you find the money.
Yeah, I, I think they'll turn it around fairly, fairly quickly, but there is a process involved and it'll take a little bit of time, certainly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Les has got the next one, too.
Thank you much. Okay, next one is Les McDonald with a report on A Street Farm Road to Hatley Edition Master Plan Project Report.
Be here on time, Mr. Palmer, and you won't get shoved out of the queue.
He'd be home by now.
Pretty tough, isn't he? That'd be a lot nicer if I was chair.
Okay, this is a fairly new endeavor, and we thought it'd be good to bring a report to the committee.
I thought it was Gary early on when we kept calling Don Palmer's name that said, "Put him to the end." Wasn't it Gary?
I think it was, actually.
I'm willing to take the heat.
Yeah, you are.
Yes, sir, go ahead. Thank you. What's before us is a joint endeavor between the University of Idaho and the City of Moscow. And this is something that the mayor and President Staben have conferred on and felt that there was good opportunity for the two entities to work together, to look at some master planning on a corridor that would be an extension of A Street and a property that's, belongs to the University of Idaho. And so we've been working our way towards that, and I'll tell you about what's going on. So the area we're talking about is what's shown here is the project study area, is outlined in the purple line. This is State Highway Eight in red at the bottom of the screen, Warbonnet to the west, Walmart here, this is the mall, Farm Road coming up and A Street heading off to the east. This is the University of Idaho Dairy that operates out in this area. They're, they're holding ponds and then all the dairy facilities themselves. A Street over the years has been extended to Farm Road and this, as you can see, is kind of pointing towards the northwest a little bit, and then extended east from Warbonnet to the U of I property and again pointing northeasterly. That is intentional in that the University of Idaho Long Range Master Plan has envisioned, and I probably with some consultation to the, with the city, you know, fifteen or twenty years back, that someday there would be a road through here, extension of A Street. And so the road alignments, as they were constructed in the past couple of decades, I guess, have taken that into account and pointed themselves in such a direction that that connection, something like this-
That's the best terrain, I guess.
Yeah, the alignment is based upon the topography that's out there. There is a pretty big knob that sits right about in here, and so that's why this turns away from that, so we don't have to go up and over it or through it. We kind of skirt the north side of it. There is, you know, a fairly decent hill that works its way up fairly steadily as you go to the north, so this would, you know, kind of side hill along through that and eventually meet in the middle. Obviously, for that to happen, the dairy would need to be somewhere else. So that's been-
Let me stop you and ask you a question about property lines. What is the green dotted line-
City limits.
-below the, below the pond?
Yeah, that is the city limit, current city limit that comes along, drops down there, around the ponds, back up to here and then back down, actually jogs all the way down there, right back up, and goes west to the state line.
Driveway.
That's the old Montgomery driveway, which is now owned by the university, by the way, that little piece right in there. This university property continues to the north, actually goes up here a little bit further, up kind of up to the ridge top, and then works its way off to the east, and then they own property over in this direction, all the university.
What set the dotted purple lines parameters, do you know?
Uh, that's really a staff line, somewhat arbitrary, is something that Bill and I worked out. The thought here is that we want to look at property to either side of the arterial, so we want to go out some distance. There is the thought that this area is, well, and that's what's contemplated in the Long Range Master Plan for the university, is that this would develop into commercial property. So similar to what happened with the mall, which is university grounds, land lease operation to the mall development, they would look at something similar on the property here and then property to the north. There's a question, though, of course, how far away from that arterial you can get and still have viable commercial property, maybe motor business-type property. As you get far enough north, it starts to lose its appeal for the development community, if you will, for commercial-type development. So it's possible that this area further to the north and on up the hill someday could be maybe a high-density residential or something of that nature.
But the master planning process should help us with that.
Right, and the idea here is to look at this area, yeah, that north line is somewhat arbitrary, but it was, we had to go somewhere with it. Didn't want to make it too extensive and, you know, go beyond really what we can afford to do.
Okay.
And it looks like another question.
How far, you know, there's this, this concept of a north-south bypass, where it came in from Airport Road, then it comes up through that draw. How far north of that, if that ever came through, would that be?
Well, there's, there's the ridge line that runs kind of right here, actually right up about in here, and swings north like that.
That's where that draw's at.
That's where, that's the top of the ridge.
Top of the ridge.
That's the top of the ridge, okay.
Draw's beyond it.
And then it drops off on the other side and that creek channel out there would be that alignment. So it's, it's north a little ways yet.
It's not close.
Not that close, not that close. So, as I was saying, the, the concept has been that eventually the, the dairy would have to move for this to happen, and that's been discussed often on among U of I circles for quite some time. And it sounds like they've reached the point now where they're starting, they've, it sounds like they've identified an alternative location and it's looking more positive that that could happen, okay? So with that in mind, then it makes sense to start looking at, okay, how could this look and how could the road be developed and how could the property be utilized through commercial development or something of that nature by the university going into the future? So President Staben and the mayor got together and talked this through at some point and brought it back to staff, and so we've advanced it this far. The concept here is to go out for a master plan, which would include a number of items in the study. So it would start with the basic road layout and design, so preliminary design, horizontal and vertical road alignment. Where does it make sense based on the topography? We have, you know, two ends to connect and we know what the topography is and does the layout that's previously been penciled out make sense, should it be modified in some fashion? From that, also, we would need to look at utility services. How could the area, both north and south of the roadway, be served with utilities, city and franchise utilities, so power, gas, those types as well? The master planning portion, portion of it for the property would then look at the retail lot layout concepts, so probably we're looking at large-scale commercial-type development. You know, maybe it's something perhaps like a Home Depot type of scale. What types of lots could be laid out, both north and south, based on the topography, the size of the area, the potential use in the commercial realm? With that, of course, would also be at least some rough mass grading concepts because you have to create pads for fairly large footprints of, you know, buildings, parking lots, things of that nature. So at least some preliminary mass grading concepts. How would those lots be accessed and then general rough grading quantity calculations to help in the cost estimating for the overall concept? If there was opportunity for phasing, how could that be done? So for instance, if we were to start with, say, the first lot coming off of Farm Road with an extension of A through that first lot, that would be maybe a phase one, what utilities would go with that, what road improvements would go with that, what grading would go with that, and then define really what that phase is and other potential phases that would follow along. So they'll be looking, would be looking at that. And then some illustrative site plan and perspective photo simulations. This is kind of an odd term, but essentially it is that kind of architectural mock-up of what would the site look like from a distance, from the highway, from Farm Road, from Warbonnet. That is done as much as anything to help assess how viable the property is for large-scale commercial-type development. Because if you're, if you're a Home Depot, and I'll keep throwing them out there, you want to know that you can be seen from the highway, right? You'd be seen from the surrounding arterials-
On the other hand, Walmart, Moscow didn't care because you couldn't see them from the highway.
You cannot see them from the highway. So it depends on, obviously, the vendor, but in most cases, we've found that there is a desire to be visible. So this step would include then creating some of those visual documents that say, hey, here's how it could look from this location. And that could be used as, you know, part of that assessment as to viability of commercial development. I suppose the university could also use them as part of their discussions with potential developers on their property as to how that would look and can they be seen. And then finally, a general project development cost estimate, you know, this is planning level, scale, you know, twenty thousand feet type of cost estimate, looking down as to what would the roads and the utilities and the grading cost for this type of developer. So that is what is in the proposed scope. We have actually written a request for qualifications for firms to assist the city and the university on this effort. That was published back on the second. Those are due on the twenty-second, so we're another week and a half away. We've received inquiry now from about, I think, five firms plus a plan center that are interested, and so they've gone on our mailing list for information that we're continuing to distribute as we get questions. We're doing this in a method that people will send us questions, we'll put together a summary of those questions with answers and distribute them back to all those folks that have expressed an interest. Anticipate that as we move forward, we'd be looking at selection of consultants in September. It's probably a five-to-six-month-long process once we give them a notice to proceed, so generally October through March of 2015 would be our anticipated schedule.
And your budget?
The budget on this is a total of fifty thousand dollars, with twenty-five thousand from the city and twenty-five thousand from the university.
That has been included in the draft 2015 budget.
No, I like it. No questions.
Questions?
My buddy that runs the dairy would sure like to know where he's gonna end up working, but-
You know, one of the, one of the things you didn't mention that would be a really good spin-off, too, is once the dairy's gone and the pond is gone, then we don't have to feel the complaints of people saying our wastewater treatment plant has bad-
And they're gonna be- But better yet, if they smell something, they'll know it's the wastewater treatment plant.
We wouldn't be able to blame the dairy.
Depends on how far they move, where they move the dairy.
Right.
Okay, Les.
Thanks.
Gary, anything else on that?
No, sir, we will proceed as anticipated.
Okay, Don Palmer, disbursement report for January, or ju- for January, July 2014. Did you spend any money in July, Don?
She sure did.
Tell us about it.
The July disbursement report shows that we have spent two million, three hundred eighty-seven thousand, six hundred, thirty-nine dollars and nine cents. This is higher because of the construction season that we're in. Nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, three hundred dollars of that is represented by payroll and we're in the high season, the swimming pool and the seasonal employees. So that's higher than what would otherwise be. Construction is five hundred and forty thousand dollars, and that's kind of broken out as a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars with the head, uh, headworks, two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars for the playfields up to this point, a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for North Polk, and then some tank cleaning pumps and whatnot are in the professional services of eighty-seven thousand, two hundred. Utilities, eighty-seven thousand, six hundred. Grants, forty-six thousand. Equipment, twenty-four thousand, nine hundred, and vehicles, seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred, of which that represents a pickup, a couple pickup trucks, one in the street, one in sewer, and an Explorer for the police vehicle. Those, those subcategories represent two point two million dollars, which is roughly ninety-two percent of the, of the entire amount. Any questions?
Tell me again, how much was the ball fields?
Ball fields for the month of July is two hundred and forty-eight thousand. It's a one point eight million dollar project, so starting to really ramp up.
Okay. All right, you want to, while we're signing that, you want to go ahead with the updating the 2015 fees?
Sure.
And you, you may want to couch it in terms of why we have to do this, not just the money changes, but what-
Sure.
-what the law calls for.
All right, we're, this is going to committee prior to the public hearing that's required by law, as you mentioned, and it's per statute of Idaho Code sixty-three thirteen eleven, which requires the public hearing and any fees that are increased by more than five percent. The City of Moscow currently uses- The city of Moscow currently uses a fee resolution, which is a catalog of all fees. So, some fees go up, some fees don't go, are actually eliminated, and some fees are new as new programs occur. Some of the fees that have gone through are the development fees, building valuation, various inspection fees, including engineering services fees, document fees, street cut and barricade fees, utility fees for water, sewer, and sanitation to adjust for the cost of capital and capital improvements. The sanitation fees are only related to the tipping portion of that, though. We didn't raise fees for collection at all. So, those fees are related for like roll carts, compactors, and any services that are provided out of the transfer station. Other fees that are, street banner installation fees, I think that's a brand-new fee if my recollection serves me right, removal fee, general license fees, and taxi cab, second-hand pawn dealer, peddlers and solicitors, vendors, and other license renewals, as you had heard earlier in the admin meeting, I believe, talked about earlier. Also, the fiber optic service fees, euthanasia, which is just an increase to cover our costs, van, pool escort service, as well as new programs.
Euthanasia of what, Don?
Dogs and cats.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
At the animal shelter.
At the animal shelter.
Thank you.
Yeah. Not in the finance department. The parks and recreation programs...
That was just approved, that we're listening to you, Don.
The, let's see, parks and recreation, art, excuse me, changes for fees in parks and recreation, and then, the Moscow arts class is related to one related service that was changed to a three-quarter week timeframe. That's the only fee that Moscow arts had actually changed. So, those are kind of a composite. There's, the fee resolution is on the website, I believe, and so, it's for the public's perusal. And then, on August 18th, following the public hearing for the budget, these fees will be presented at that time as well.
Okay. Now, in your fee structure, you've got water, sewer, and solid waste, fee increases in various places and parts that are a product of recent rate studies.
Correct.
So, water had a rate study that was approved a couple of years ago, called for certain changes in rates over the next...
Through 2020.
Okay.
We are in the second year of the water, sewer, and sanitation rate study. And so, this, to, for the public's benefit, and let's, we need to expand upon that because...
It's the only reason we're here, is for the public's benefit.
Yeah, the rate study had actually contemplated some significant rate adjustments in the sewer portion of that, of which case, they decided to do a two-year phase-in of those fees. Impacted by that more significantly was the school district, the University of Idaho, and restaurants. Because of that...
They found that those were not in the correct balance.
They weren't correctly balanced because of...
Between themselves.
Because of the contribution that they put load onto the wastewater treatment plant. So, in that review, and it was about an 18-month process for rate study and rate study consultants, they determined the, at the, well, let me back up. The rate committee also comprised of all of these different classifications, restaurant, University of Idaho, residential. There was probably eight or nine folks on that committee. And it was decided and passed by city council that this would be a two-year phase-in, and as I stated earlier, this is the second year of that phase-in rate, so...
So, those are included in this. Then, you also have other rates that are not part of those studies?
Yes, that is correct. Those, and because this is a fee resolution, these are all related to fees, not property taxes, sales tax, or liquor tax, or things that we get through intergovernmental revenues. So, this, the water, sewer, sanitation piece of this is about $13, $14 million in revenue. The portion as related to the general fund is about $595,000. And then, the portion related to arts is about, well, farmers markets, $28,000, so... Parks and recreation, I didn't look at that number, but it's about, I would say about $400,000, $450,000. That would include swimming pool, the recreation programs, and the youth programs.
I had asked Don over the weekend, I left him a message, inquiring as to why some rates were going up dramatically. And I got a call earlier today from Bill Belknap, who, well, he didn't quite take credit for all of that, indicated that quite a few of those items were in his department, and they were because they had done some studying of what it actually cost the city to handle those things. Bill, you want to give us a couple of sentences on the types of things that you were talking about, and just to comment on the fact that you didn't just do this for the fun of it?
Afternoon. Yes, in preparation of the updating of the fee resolution for the upcoming year, we did take a look at our fees, especially for our land use applications. And those actually show up on the first page, a little bit beyond the first page of the fee resolution. And you will see that there are some, on a percentage basis, fairly sizable increase on conditional use permits, variances, and other land use actions. We sat down and kind of reviewed the increased cost of publication, because all of those actions include at least one, if not two, legal ads published in the newspaper, include mailings to adjacent property owners, oftentimes twice, because there are two hearings on a rezon or a subdivision plat, one before the Planning and Zoning Commission and one before the city council, and a fair amount of direct staff time that's involved in processing those applications. We found that what we were charging currently, let's say, for a conditional use permit at $260, you know, our actual total cost that we were experiencing was $650 to process that application. So, we kind of scheduled in what I had, this was kind of the start of three years of kind of getting ourselves up to a point where we're actually recovering the cost of what it takes to process that application. And so, this, what you're seeing is kind of the first of three years of scaling up to hit that mark.
So, you anticipate coming up this much over the next two more years?
That would ultimately be a policy question for the council. If you wish for the applicant to cover the cost of the services that are being delivered, then that would be what we would need to do. Ultimately, we need to bring that, the cost of that application, up to $650. We have looked at other jurisdictions for that type of application. Post falls at 750 for a conditional use permit, sand points...
Which one are you looking at? Conditional special use permits?
Yeah, I'm just picking out a conditional use permit as one example. But if you look at post falls, it's 750, sand point 530, Missoula, it's $1,714. And Boise, if it's a residential unit, it's 484, and then, it goes up by acreage. So, if it was one acre or less, 615, one to five acres, 1,047, which we really don't make any distinction on the size.
And we've been down at 260 last year.
60.
You're taking it to 390 for 2015.
Correct.
And anticipating moving it up to what in the end?
Anticipating that we'd be at 520 for '16 and 650 for '17.
Okay, up to 650.
But that is, again, it's a policy question for the council. Who should be paying for that cost? Should it be the taxpayer, because we are a general fund entity, or should it be the person that is, you know, essentially going through that process and demanding that expense? That's ultimately a question for the council. This is a beginning stage of us really evaluating what is the true cost that we experience. And it doesn't necessarily incorporate everything that goes into this. There's a legal expense, there's administration expense for a lot of these land use proceedings, because they do tend to be litigious in a lot of ways. And we're not even really capturing that. I have a 15% kind of overhead factor. It's intended to capture some of that, but probably not the true cost if we looked at it in reality. So, I mean, those are the more large, the largest changes, and they show up in red on that first page, and so, those certainly do stand out. And we've done that for all the different land use applications, and that's the reason why we had some of those increases proposed. It is a recommendation of the council. The council can certainly choose whether you wish to approve.
Don't take offense at this question, but, because I know you probably have, but I'll ask it anyway. How hard have you looked at reducing our expenses to give these services? Is any way we can do it for less money?
There's really no option that I've identified where we can do it for less. It takes a certain amount of staff time to meet with the applicant, to review the application, to prepare the staff report, to prepare the presentation, to attend the public hearings, to write the reasoned statement for the final decision, and to provide the regulatory tickings, notification, you know, prepare the notice, prepare the notice mailing list. All of these things are statutorily required. And so, there's no way we can actually control a lot of those actions. And then, all the statutory required, hearing publications and notices, again, those are things we have to do. There are certainly some policy decisions that the city has made in the past about what we notice and how long we notice. So, under state law, many actions only require noticing all properties within 300 feet. We do 600 feet, so there is some additional postage expense that is experienced there. But in reality, there's not a lot of ways to reduce the cost on these items.
It reminds me of what my dad used to always tell me once, well, he said, you know, everything seeks its own level. Water seeks its own level, you know? Eventually, you get to the point where people refuse to do it any longer, and then, there won't be any need for it. Then, we'll reduce our expenses.
Just...
It's expensive to do business.
Walter?
Yes, sir.
You asked a question earlier about the impact of the budget on a lot of these fees, so I went back and looked at some of this, and you can jump in if, Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, but I checked with Leora on a lot of these, and they hit the 422-19 line item, which I believe is the other permits line item. That line item is $6,000. We collect about $595,000 in fees. So, some of these fees are a unit cost thing, and we don't even collect some of these fees. As an example, mobile home parks, we haven't collected that fee in years.
Nobody's built one.
Because nobody's built one. So, but what he's trying to do is if he did do one, then this is what the fee would be. A lot of these costs or these fees are to recover costs in the event that they do happen. Budget's not predicated on some of these activities, so, just so you're aware of that. And that budget is budgeted $6,000, so...
What are you going to do?
Yes, we're moving forward.
Moving forward as law requires.
Yep, we will. We'll do.
I would like, Gary, at council, to include some explanation about that your staff didn't just sit around either throwing darts at a board or making up numbers, that there is some basis, either rate studies on the enterprise funds or the type of work that Bill has done on his stuff to determine what these numbers should be.
I can make a general presentation of the work that's gone into it. I would note just generally that...
I mean, that was my first reaction. I see all these red, and I'm looking here, and I got 1.5 and 60% all written down, and I'm thinking, who in the world made this stuff up?
Absolutely.
And so, the question was, who in the world made this stuff up?
We will have an explanation for you, sir.
Okay. Anything else for the good order?
I have nothing.
I'm ready to go.
Consider that a motion to adjourn, and we are. Thank you.